Welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast, Channel 14, and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. From our Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine, can you read us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, September 3, 2019. Quite a few things on the agenda tonight. I am going to take some things out of order. Is Deli here? No?
She was.
Okay. So we won't take things out of order. So we'll go right to number two, community announcements. Day of Remembrance, Wednesday, September 11, 9:00 a.m., Town Hall Plaza. Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine.
Once again, this is the second annual...
Is this young man or...
No, they are a different group.
Freedom Walk.
Oh, Freedom Walk, okay, good. Thank you.
We're going to have at 9:00 on September 11 with the police and fire. We're going to have a small ceremony out front to... It's the 18th year, so it's right out front here, yes. So it should be a somber ceremony, but it would be fast, 15 minutes or so.
Similar to last year's?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Any questions, guys? Thank you, Vinnie. Thanks, Vinnie. All right, next, the Rockland Freedom Walk, Bicentennial Track, September 11, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. How are you?
Introduce yourself first and tell everyone where you live.
So, hi, my name is Matt Rogers. I live on 65 Damon Road. I'm from Troop 57 Rockland. I'm here today to request permission to host the annual 9/11 Freedom Walk at the Bicentennial Track on Reed Street on September 11 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Who would be part of this walk?
Anyone who really wants to come.
So open to anyone in town that wanted to come? Okay, good.
So it says it's just a 15, 20-minute walk, just to reflect on the events of September 11?
Just walk around the track and reflect.
How many years have you done this thing?
I'm not really sure, but it's been going on for a while.
It's been a couple of years anyway, so I think if I recall, last year, there's a pretty...
Third?
There was a pretty decent turnout, so... Any questions, concerns, comments?
No, I just want to say, great job stepping up and doing this. Very nice. We need a motion to make a motion to approve the Freedom Walk on September 11 from 5:00 to 7:00.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, open session minutes of August 13, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the open session minutes of August 13, 2019.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I will abstain.
One abstention. Okay. New business, ambulance abatements policy. Chief Duffy.
Evening, Board.
Evening, Chief. How are you?
Good, thank you, and you?
Doing good.
So we come before you with an ambulance abatement policy. We're looking to change up how we have been doing abatements for the uncollected ambulance receipts. Working with Newtown Administrator, Newtown Accountant, they felt that this would streamline the process, make it a little bit easier on everybody, and we could, you know, get business done probably a little bit easier and a little bit smoother, and I have a feeling that the auditors, the accountants, will be happy with that. So essentially what this is, is it's a policy. It's a draft at this time, kind of took snippets from different communities around the South Shore, you know, policies that chiefs had sent in, setting, you know, taking a look at when we set our rates, how we do our collections, patient invoicing and stuff like that. But the big part of this policy is for the Board of Selectmen to allow the Town Administrator to authorize the abatements. That way, we can look at abatements on more of a monthly basis rather than a quarterly basis, and that was a recommendation of the auditors a few years ago. So that's the gist of the policy. In the big section, another big section is hardships. If, you know, for folks that have hardships in requesting, you know, write-offs for hardship purposes, this sets a policy for the town that I feel is equitable and fair.
Anybody have any questions?
No, on the abatement, as we read it, so both yourself and the Town Accountant would be involved in this?
Yes.
Given some recommendations, too?
Yep, so the way I see it working, and obviously, you know, it's going to take a little bit, but we at the Fired Upon will be compiling it. Mary and myself will be compiling all the figures, handing them off to the accountant for double-checking and looking over, and then final approval of the abatement by the Town Administrator.
Okay. Will there be any type of policy? So when you talk about hardships, is there anything formal for a resident to apply for a hardship? How would they know?
So there would be a hardship policy form on the reverse side of the invoice. I believe it already is there on the back of their invoice, if they get one.
I just wanted to... I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to, I want to thank the Chief for coming in and for putting this together. The impetus for this was, you know, the Chief asked to add this onto an agenda, and it was surprising to me because, much as we've talked about in the past, you know, my view of the role for the Board of Selectmen is policy-setting the chief elected officers, whereas that's really more of like a day-to-day administrative function. But rather than go to you and say, "Just let us do it. We thought it better to give you like a formal policy so you can see the parameters, what we're going to work with." And just as Rich said, it wouldn't just be me kind of arbitrarily deciding anything. I'd be relying on the advice of the Town Accountant and the Fire Chief. And then, as the Chief noted, you know, the key part is on that second page, 3.4.2, and we use the word "may" very carefully. We just said that the Selectmen may authorize the Town Administrator to abate uncollectible fees, you know, if you decide you want to, you know, keep that function later, you know, fine. But this way, it just gives you that flexibility to do that, and that way, we can be more efficient, and you get a sense of how we're going to approach it.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Chief. Chief, 3.3 collections, like under this policy, will there be a more strength in effort to our collector, or is it really the same, it's just really like memorialized in writing?
It's the same. Our collections are excellent right now with the building company that we work with.
Because you're third-party in that now.
We do third-party.
Because you used to do it internally, and now you're...
Correct, correct.
And there's been an improvement in that.
And we had excellent collections then, and we third-partied it. They were able to go after a little bit more of the deductibles and collect some of the we weren't able to get to. So, yeah, they've been doing an excellent job, and, you know, the collections are there again. It's something that we hope we don't have to use.
So this is just the next step of really solidifying a policy?
This has just kind of solidified the policy.
That's been improving as it's been going along.
Correct.
Streamlining the process.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the operating guidelines for the questions.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining, as my wife handles the ambulance building.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Veterans Agent Donation Acceptance, Van Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine, again. I'm picking on you.
There you go. Vinnie Fontaine, Veterans Agent. As you can see, a family wanted to donate a wheelchair van to us. It's a 2014, it only has 14,000 miles on it. Not only do they want to donate the van, they want to continue paying the maintenance on the van going forward. So only thing we're going to pay for is insurance. I'm working on putting a policy together of how the van will be used or not used. And one of those things is, I know I have some frequent flyers who call and get an ambulance ride to the hospital, so this will cut out on those bills because I know I have some that come my way, and probably they could have got a ride. It holds three wheelchairs, or it holds four passengers plus a driver.
And so, in addition to when we were talking, so they want to pick up, because that was when we talked, that was my only concern a little bit, was what it is. So they want to continue to pick up the maintenance part of it.
That's correct, and the maintenance will be done by a company out of nowhere. They actually specialize in these vans. On top of all this, another, somebody else that came forward, and they want to pay for the whole wrapping of the van, so for more of a theme, with the flag and all the wording and everything, so that's not going to cost the town any money either.
Where will the van be housed?
So right now, I have it parked at the highway, and either there or at my new home at the senior center.
Who will be driving the van?
Right now, only I will, but as we go forward and we set a policy, that we'll go forward from that.
So that's the only concern I have is...
So anyone who's going to be on there, I think we got to set a policy where they're named and we actually, you know, make sure that they're, you know, that they have, you know, license, a good license and the whole...
Oh, yeah, there'll be definitely a process, yeah, definitely. It's just I'm not going to hand the key off to somebody, say, "Oh, just bring it back." That won't happen, so...
Vinnie, this is awesome, man.
Will they also be either a paramedic or a...
No, it won't, no.
No need that?
No.
Would you handle disabled people or anything?
Well, we'll only be veterans, so most of it will be used to... One of the biggest things that I tried to do when I came to town is getting transportation to the VA in Brockton. I know we have the Bat Bus that comes, but when you take the Bat Bus, they drive you to Brockton Hospital, you get off that bus, you get on a second bus, it drives you to the central bus station, you get off of that bus, and then you wait for a third bus to get you to the VA. That's a little crazy. So this will actually help me get some of the veterans to the VA in Brockton, and from there, they can get a shuttle to the JPR, to West Roxbury.
How is, so the only, how does this impact on, you're a one-man operation?
Listen, I'm here for the veterans, so I'll make it work.
Okay, all right.
So that's what it's all about.
I know, I know there's a lot of fluff in your department, so...
So I know, I'll make it work. I got to take care of the veterans, so this is one more thing that I can add to.
All right. So you're willing to add this on to everything else that you do as a one-man show?
Well, I, so actually, I have to thank John Melvin, who actually, he did a lot of this research a couple of years ago when I first started. I mentioned it to him, and he goes, "Oh, I'll get right on it." And he made it happen, so I'm really thankful for him, and it's hard work, so...
Yeah, I want to say thank you to you and John on this. I know there was a lot of hard work, and now even having the maintenance to it, that's an unbelievable deal for the town.
I want to thank the Stevens family, too. That's excellent. That's awesome. That's really great.
Yeah, well, there'll be some, they actually, so they contacted me today and John, and they, when we have the wrapping, everything all done, they want to come down, and they want to have a ceremony. So when I get more information, I'll pass it along.
You love your ceremonies, don't you think?
I, yeah. I'm getting better at them.
You are, you are. You totally conquered them. That's great.
So we good with the process in place that's needed so they can get their, so we do it all for tax deduction purposes?
Yeah, so I worked with their lawyer, and so we're still in the process. I'm getting the title tomorrow.
Okay.
So, but I worked with them, so they can get their, they worked it out, they get their tax.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was what they wanted, so it's going to happen for them.
Okay.
Yeah, like I just have one question to you, Vinnie, and to Doug. Is there any way, I mean, like Mr. Penny mentioned, you're like a one-man army, so to speak, and like you always juggle a whole bunch of things. Is there any way, like, we could look into either, like a qualified volunteer program, or even, like, would there be any, like, grant programs to even hire some type of qualified driver out there through...
So I get, so I have something. So do we look to take this, so I know we have a volunteer program work-off for the seniors. Do we look to do something similar with veterans, where they could actually donate some of their time to help you out and get a write-off?
So when the new Brave Act came out, there was a section in there just for work-off for veterans, and right now, I'm in the middle of putting that together, so I can go to the next town meeting with it. So it's one of the articles that I'm going to bring to town meeting, so yes, there is.
So then we could actually, they could actually volunteer and actually get credit towards...
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's something I'm working on, so that'll be next town meeting, hopefully.
Then there'd be a veteran driver to a veteran.
That's correct.
And that's all, good. Thank you, Vinnie.
Vinnie, seems to be more and more, thank you.
My pleasure.
It's becoming common.
Thanks, Vinnie. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, next on the agenda, conflict of interest approval. Town Moderator, Kevin Henderson.
So I will say this, I know Mr. Pumphrey wanted to be here tonight, but he had a conflict in his schedule and could not make it here tonight.
Good evening, Board. John Pumphrey brought this to light to both Doug and myself, and because he is buying the Timberlands Bowling Alley in Abington. And even though it's out of town, he was a little concerned because on rainy day, a rainy day in the summer, the Youth Commission could go over there and for someplace for the children to go that day, and he didn't want to see that there was a conflict of interest, as he was being on the Finance Committee and currently the Chairman of the Finance Committee. So Doug contacted the Town Council and talked, they talked with the Ethics Commission Attorney, and as long as John filled out the disclosure form, which he did, and you all should have a copy of it, and he signed it, but the only thing they said was, is that even though I'm the appointing authority for the Finance Committee, they wanted the Board of Selectmen to vote on this also. And as Mr. Penny knows, after serving a number of years, a long number of years, Larry Ryan served a number of years, Michael Loughlin on the Finance Committee, it's a hard-working group of people that get everything done so that we go to town meeting and are ready for the next fiscal year budget. John did a tremendous job last year as Chairman. I would have hated to see him step down, and I can't see any reason, as he stated in this, there's no line item for bowling in any budget. So I would ask that the Board, I've approved it in my letter to you, I would ask that the Board approve, take a vote to approve this, and a letter be attached to the letter I did and his form, and we put it on file with the Town Clerk if anybody should have any questions of a conflict of interest.
Still moved.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second. I do just want to say, you know, John's a great guy, and he does a tremendous job as Chairman of the Finance Committee, but I think it's important that we make this recommendation based on the nature of the business that John runs, not based on who the person it is. So going forward, so regardless of how good a guy John is, we got a first and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, actually.
All right. Next on the agenda, preliminary Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Doug Lap.
I have an easy one tonight, and I just, maybe going back to that last item, I just wanted to echo what you all said, and just I want to thank Mr. Pumphrey because he handled this perfectly. Like, this is a textbook example of bringing it to our attention, talking to the Ethics Commission, being transparent, and some people, when they fill out forms, they just do the bare minimum and just write a couple of words, but he went in the detail, and so I just want to publicly state that he handled that perfectly, and I'm very pleased about that. Yeah, in talking with Sue about a preliminary schedule, we just thought it'd be a good idea to throw it in the packet. You guys could look at it. You can obviously always change it in the future. It's not like you vote once and it's set in stone, but we just thought it'd be helpful to take a first crack at the upcoming year. If you want to discuss it now, great. If you want to wait, you know, it's up to you. We just wanted to start the discussion.
So I know for me personally, I want to say thank you. I do have some changes coming up in my personal life, and this schedule actually fits perfect in, for my needs, so I want to say thank you.
I know, I like how we moved back the July and the August meetings to, it looks like the third week?
Yeah, the second week.
No, we moved it up, yeah.
Moved it back, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it's, you know what I mean.
There we go.
Looks good to me.
All right. Any...
Do I get my birthday off? October 1st?
What is it?
October 1st.
Yeah, you're covered, Larry.
Okay.
I'll have a cake for you.
There you go, have a cake.
Yeah, the first thing we all do is just kind of look for birthdays and anniversaries and stuff like that, and make sure we're covered, but it looks pretty good otherwise.
Is it? Yeah, of course.
Any, we have to vote this?
No.
No, okay, that's right, that. Okay. All right, moving on. Other new business, not reasonably anticipated. Delshawn Flip from the Board of Health, the Health Agent, has asked to come before us tonight to give a brief update on the situation with the work stoppage at Republic disposal.
You asked.
You asked. I called you and you asked.
I was going to stop by saying, like, what should we talk about? But obviously, we know that, so with that said, we appreciate and support all the workers' right to strike. We obviously can't take a side during a labor dispute. The Rockland Board of Health has been in constant contact with Republic Services upper management, Town Administrator Doug Lap, my board, and Republic on a, looking for a solution to this unfortunate situation. I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous. Deep breaths, right?
You're doing great.
At this time, our focus is getting the trash picked up before it becomes a health issue. We are aware that some streets didn't get serviced today. Thursday and Friday routes and Monday's routes were not completed, allegedly due to the protesters slowing down the trucks on purpose. And these will be addressed tomorrow, Wednesday, before they start the Tuesday route. We're opening the recycling center located at 1,000 Bee Street on Wednesday at 8:30 for residents to drop off their recycling. For now, the Board is, so we're not concentrating on picking up recycling right now. We're just going to wait it out for a little bit. We have a board meeting scheduled Thursday, September 5, at 5:00, to discuss solutions and resolutions to the ongoing crisis. So with that, I'm grateful for all the support from the Rockland Police, the Rockland Highway Fire, and especially Doug Lap for getting the required information out to the public as best as we can in keeping the community safe.
Any questions for Deli?
What time will the recycling center be open tomorrow?
8:30.
Until?
4:00. So it's normally closed.
Is there any way we can keep it open later for those who have to work, or is that not an option?
It is, it is an option, and this is something that we're also going to discuss at our board meeting going forward, but tomorrow, it's just going to be till 4:30.
I just saw a few comments online. People were saying, you know, I have to work late and whatnot, so I'm just...
Yeah, I know.
It's tough.
We're trying, I'm trying. Everybody wants, like, immediate resolution, and I can't give it to them. I'm trying.
No, thank you for the work you've been doing.
Thanks.
So I do have, so a question. I know we've got a temporary permit for 10 tons a day from the DEP, and I don't know if this is going to be addressed at the Thursday meeting, but if this strike continues, you know, obviously, it's pretty apparent that Republic can't meet the daily need of picking up the trash. They're falling short every day. When would we look to put that dumpster out there so people can...
We're going to discuss that, the Board of Health meeting.
Okay.
An option, yeah.
Where is the meeting held? Up here?
Here, right in this office, yeah. 5:00. And everybody's welcome to attend that meeting as well.
Any other questions?
Just a couple of comments. I just, I want to echo a few things that Deli said, which is, obviously, there's very strict federal labor laws, and as you all know, but I'll just say for the public, you know, we have to be very careful that we don't take a side in a labor dispute, you know. Workers have a right to strike, but what we're focusing on is, as Deli said, protecting the health and welfare of the public and making sure that we don't have, you know, trash and then potential health problems, rodents, all the things that are associated with that. And that's why we're focusing on trash pickup over recycling, and as Deli noted, we do have a recycling center that all residents can use, so we thought, in working with the Board of Health and in working with Republic, we thought that was the best way to prioritize. All that being said, I just want you to know that we've been very aggressive in trying to work with Republic. I mean, Deli was, and I, but especially Deli, was working all through the weekend. We had numerous, numerous phone calls, some as recent as, you know, 5:15 tonight, where we're really highlighting as strongly as we possibly can the importance of their obligation to fulfill their contract. They have a labor dispute, that's their issue to work through, but they have contractual obligations to the town that have to be met, and there are potentially financial penalties that could be borne on Republic if they're not able to meet them. And, you know, we're working with our attorneys to evaluate that, keeping track, and we've made that known. So I just, I want to make sure you and the public know that we're not just kind of sitting back being reactive, but we've been, you know, very aggressive, trying to balance all the various needs, workers' rights to protest, along with taxpayers' rights to get their trash picked up. So, you know, we're doing our best with that. We're obviously very frustrated because we've had a number of commitments and promises made with contingency plans, and they've not happened the way that we were told they would or that we had hoped. So we're, you know, we're working within the parameters of the law to try to get, make the, make do as best as we possibly can. So I just, it's probably obvious to you that we were doing that, but I just wanted to say it out loud so you're aware of that. And I guess with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to address. But again, it's really been Deli and the Board of Health taking the lead.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deli.
Deli, thank you.
Thank you, Deli.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Town Administrator's Report and Correspondence. Doug Lap.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things. One is I want to highlight, there's still a few town staff that I'm actually still meeting, you know, part-time employees, and it was funny, I met one of the electrical inspectors late last week, and his name is Michael Dutton, and Michael told me that he watches every Board of Selectmen meeting, so I'm mentioning his name. I'm going to quiz him to see if he actually does, because I was skeptical that he actually watches all these meetings. But I've enjoyed, you know, meeting all the remaining staff that I hadn't met yet to date. Along that line, just staffing-wise, I want to let you know about a couple of changes. In the Board of Health Office, Diane Bold has resigned. I wasn't sure if you were aware of that or not, but she's found another opportunity. She's moving on, and we're happy for all the work that she's done for us. Her last day is actually tomorrow, which is the 4th. We're going to be posting that job internally soon, and, you know, she explained how, what a wonderful experience it was, working for the town, working for the Board of Health. So I just want to thank her for her contribution. I also just wanted to highlight that there's also been a couple of other changes. Leann McGinnis in the Police Department is retiring effective September 6, and Christine McGinnis has accepted that position. And then lastly, Robin Day from the Tax Collector's Office has accepted the vacant sewer position, and that'll be effective on the 16th. So we, you know, there's a little bit of movement, and we're going to be trying to do some cross-training, so we ask that people be patient with us while there's some of those staffing changes.
Can I just ask one, a really quick question? Are the parking collector...
That's a good question. I was, you know...
And so is that going to stay in the office?
My recommendation is that that function should stay with the position, not the personality, not the person. So my, so I think we're going to come to you shortly with a recommendation that that So, my, so I think we're gonna come to you shortly with a recommendation that that stay in that department, in the tax collector, so it stays in this building, and people don't have to go to the sewer department to get that done. But I'm not ready for that tonight. We need a few more discussions, but you, you read my mind. The next thing I wanted to mention, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I got invited to a meeting at the city of Brockton, the mayor's office. So, I attended that the other day, and it was actually very interesting. It was, it was the Brockton's mayor, along with all the neighboring town administrators and a bunch of key staff from the mayor's office. And what they were focusing on was the impact of homelessness, as well as drug abuse and overdoses in the city of Brockton. And they actually had collected a lot of data that shows how many of the people that are in those situations are actually coming from neighboring communities, including Rockland, but seeking services there, and they're actually, obviously, going there 'cause that's where the services are. So, they, they wanted to reach out regionally to see if there's some approaches we can take collectively to try to get more resources from the state to help. Uh, so there's a lot of good discussion about it, and they're actually, the mayor's gonna be meeting with the lieutenant governor soon, and, and we talked about potentially even looking at a community compact grant where they could do some more data analysis, that kind of thing. The long and the short of it is they're gonna have, like, a, a task force or a committee that they're gonna pull together with the key staff from, from each of the towns in the city of Brockton. I've asked Jen to represent, uh, Rockland in, in that effort, and I think it's, it's gonna be interesting, and, and hopefully, you know, as a group collectively, make those that get some more resources that'll help all the towns. So, I wanted to give you an update on that. Next, I wanted to read, if you don't mind, a short letter of appreciation that we got from a resident, and I thought this was really nice. You may, you may have seen a copy of it. It was, uh, sent to Police Chief Llewellyn and the Board of Selectmen. "I'm writing to command the Rockland Police Department for extraordinary service they provided to my family this past week. Our dog, Copper, ran away from us at the Home Depot parking lot on Saturday afternoon, August 10th. We called the police department right away and appreciated the kindness of the dispatcher who took my hysterical phone call and the officers who came by that afternoon as we searched for him in the woods. Animal Control Officer Davidson contacted us first thing Sunday morning, even though he was off-duty. For the next week, he contacted us regularly, followed up every lead he received, checked and baited the safe traps we set, and provided helpful advice and encouragement. While we were out of town this past weekend and he was off-duty, he took our calls and contacted people who had seen our dog. Once the dog entered the trap, Davidson transported him to the animal hospital for boarding, having offered to care for him personally if the hospital wouldn't keep him. As a fellow government worker, I know that much of what public servants do is unseen. However, Animal Control Officer Davidson's actions, as well as those of the other members of the Rockland Police Department who helped us find Copper, deserve recognition. We would not have been reunited with our dog if Davidson had not given so much of his time and attention to finding him. My husband, Copper, and I are very grateful. Sincerely, Susan Atwater." I just wanted to read that out loud, 'cause I thought that was just a wonderful letter. And, uh, animal control can be really difficult, and I just thought that, that deserved a little recognition. I know, I think the fire chief just left, but I also wanted to mention that there's gonna be a retirement open house for Deputy Fire Chief David Woolley. Please join the members of the Rockland Fire Department in wishing Deputy, Deputy David Woolley a happy and healthy retirement after 25 years in the fire service and 19 years with the town of Rockland. And that's on Friday, the 13th, at 11:30 in the morning at the fire station. You can stop in anytime. So, that's it for my regular announcements. I had just one other item I wanted to highlight that will probably merit discussion on a future agenda, but I thought I'd just hand this out, um, just to kind of kick it off. I can explain it. So, this is regarding the Charter Review Committee. So, as we talked about at a prior meeting, I've reached out to the Mass Municipal Association and specifically the MMMA, that's the Mass Managers Association, their former government committee, to have them come in, give us a little bit of free advice and input, you know, before we get too far down the road. And in, and my understanding, I think, unless I misunderstood, was that our Charter Review Committee was fully formed. But I was trying to figure out where we're at, and I've been working with the town clerk, and this is my best understanding of where we're actually at. So, what I did on this piece of paper is I just pasted on the right-hand side the language from town meeting that created the nine-member committee. And then on the left is who the town clerk and I believe are actually appointed. So, you'll see that it's supposed to have three members of a standing charter maintenance committee, plus six members of the ad hoc committee appointed by you. It looks to me as though we only actually have one person appointed to charter maintenance, and then you see the five that are appointed on the ad hoc committee. So, we have, I believe, three vacancies on the committee.
Do we have a second charter maintenance?
We had, Felicia Wenin came to us probably a year ago, and I think we appointed her to charter maintenance. So, according to the clerk, the appointments had been made if you had, so, and that's where I wanted to go with this, is if you, if you wanted to talk about it now, or maybe, maybe put it on an agenda. Sure. But I, in my opinion, we should get this committee fully appointed.
Absolutely.
So, we can kick it off and then take all the next steps.
Beautiful.
So, I just wanted to give that, and again, I didn't know if there were names I was missing, and then maybe we'll add that to the next agenda, and then we can think about how to, how to recruit. Unless you have names that you're already familiar with.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have a representative from this board on it?
So, I, I want to be that representative.
That's what I, I thought it was you.
But it'd be more of a liaison.
Yeah, but it'd put more of a liaison than, uh, than a member on the board, the way it was being set up. Yep.
Okay.
Are you already assigned a liaison?
Yes.
Yeah.
I hope we did that.
Beautiful. Those were awful to me. Go, on your way.
That was all I had.
That's it?
All right.
Any further discussion on that, guys? None? Okay. Moving on.
No, other than the fact that, you know, so maybe put on the agenda for next, for next meeting that we actually look out to solicit, um, some of the townspeople.
Yes.
If anyone's listening now, if, if there's an interest in them to, to be part of this, it's really important.
Thank you. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mike Mullen.
Uh, yes. Uh, just a few quick things. First of all, I, um, I should've mentioned this earlier, but I wanted to really thank Deli, Doug Lapp, um, like, and Mike and Rich, especially for their work over the past, uh, five days or so with the, um, with the, like, Republic strike. Our Deli and Doug and the, our police chief and our council have worked tirelessly to make sure that everything was, uh, going, uh, from the town's perspect, uh, perspective according to the law and our protocols, and, um, Doug, I've been, I'm just really impressed with the, uh, when the information, the updates, um, uh, like, it was mentioned earlier that all we, both you and Deli worked, uh, throughout the weekend to, uh, to deal with this and to respond and to get, uh, like, information out to us and to all the residents of the town and, uh, like, you know, and with that information, uh, the information that, um, that Mike and Rich have, uh, all gotten out and to share with people has actually been really impressive. We've had one, uh, consistent, uh, point of information, and everything's really been, uh, consistent and uniform, and I, uh, you know, my experience with the town that, oh, you know, uh, the information like that and the dissemination of, uh, like it has been, has never really happened before. And, uh, you know, um, in terms of, you know, just, uh, the accurate information getting out, the utilization of social media, I'm having, like, a town, uh, Twitter now is important, and it's very helpful, so I just wanted to thank you, Doug, at the Deli, um, and everyone involved. I know it's been a, um, a stressful situation for, uh, for everyone, including other workers in Republic and, and everyone involved, but, uh, we're waiting through, and that's what I think we're gonna continue to have to do, but, um, and, uh, so thank you for that. The other thing I just wanted to mention, this weekend, uh, Reimagine Rockland is having, like, a few events. Number one is a town-wide cleanup on, um, Saturday morning. Uh, there's information on our Facebook page about that, but I believe we're gathering here around 9:30 or so, but, uh, for exact information... Yeah. Our exact information is on, um, our Facebook page. There is the possibility, I've learned with everything happening on-town and all things related to, uh, cleaning up things, that we might have to make some adjustments to that event, uh, based on, uh, trash issues, which we'll deal with, and we'll get that information out accordingly. But then, um, the following day, um, Sunday, is our second annual dog walk, and we'll be, I don't have a dog, but I walk, and, um...
Jen put the leash on you?
Jen always has a leash on me, but, uh, we'll gather at the senior center, and...
That was out loud.
Yes, it was. Well, she doesn't watch anyways, but, um, and we'll gather at the senior center, we'll walk up, uh, uptown and down the rail trail. So, for more information on that, feel free to visit the Reimagine Rockland Facebook page as well, because that information will be way more trustworthy than any information I provide. And with that, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, well, I wanna thank Mr. Mullen for stealing everything that I was gonna talk about.
Oh, okay. It's all right.
Not a first.
Come up with something new.
Doug, could you just tell the public what the Twitter handle is?
I just wrote that down.
I forgot what it was.
Yes, thank you. At Rockland Town.
At Rockland Town.
So, it's Rockland Town. That's it. And, uh, so thank you for mentioning it, both of you. I appreciate it. Obviously, the impetus for getting it go, going right now was to get information out as quickly as we could about this strike, but we're gonna use it for much more than that. We're gonna put out positive information, you know, might retweet that, those, some of those events, but we're gonna, we're gonna use this continually, and hopefully it'll be helpful for people. And if, if there are items that you think we're not mentioning that we should be putting out on there, all of you, please don't hesitate to let me know. Rockland Town.
Rockland Town. Thank you.
Rockland Town. Thank you very much.
I think that sums it up for tonight.
That covers it? All right. Mr. Penny?
A couple of things. School started, so please be mindful as you drive in town, especially in the morning and the afternoon with the school buses. Uh, so when they stop and, and put the flashing lights on and, uh, put the stop sign out, please stop. We don't need to have any accidents. Uh, also, be mindful of, uh, of the kids walking. There are a lot of kids that walk. Uh, when you see them in the crosswalk, um, don't speed up, actually stop and let them cross. So, thank you. Um, I was gonna talk about the cleanup day, but you got it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, best of luck to all the fall athletes. So, uh, school sports is start, uh, something near and dear to my heart, and, uh, wish them all the, uh, all the best in the upcoming season. And I have one other thing. So, I haven't done this before, um, but I just felt the need, so I have a, a written statement that I, that I wanna read. Prepared statement, "While this is unusual and a first for me, I feel it's necessary. These comments are 100% of my own comment, uh, comments that are not associated with the Board of Selectmen or any other member or anyone else but myself. As you're aware, our contracted company that, and its employees have not been able to come to a contract, uh, agreement after approximately 10 months of negotiations. This lack of an agreement has created the situation in which the employees felt they had no other choice but to strike. I respect the right of the workers to call for and go out on strike after 10 months without being able to come to an agreement. With that said, it has put the town in a troubling position. Republic has not, in my opinion, done enough for the townspeople of Rockland to assure that our trash and recycling needs are taken care of per our contract with them during this time. This strike is in no way, this strike in no way came upon Republic without warning, and yet they were ill-prepared to meet the needs of our residents. Since the strike has been announced, Republic has not met one promise regarding their plan to pick up trash, and that's unacceptable." Actually, uh, Mr. Lapp commented that. "I would like to call out a few individuals and departments which I feel have really stepped up during this situation. First off, Doug Lapp, our newly-appointed town administrator, has jumped in without hesitation, and I greatly appreciate the efforts of he and his staff during this tough time. Really has taken a lot on his plate, um, when, probably shouldn't have had to have taken as much on his plate. Chairman Michael Lawfen, who has worked closely with, with Doug to help get information out to the townspeople as becomes available and for being as visible as he has been during this time. To the Rockland Police Department, which once, once again has stepped up to lend its support and manpower to assist in trying to make the residents get the service they deserve. To the health agent, Del Shawn Flip, who's been working diligently with Republic, with the town administrator, to really try, uh, to come and find solutions. She really has stepped up in this time, has, uh, has worked, uh, nonstop since this situation, and I really appreciate all her efforts. But I'd also like to express my displeasure with two entities during this situation. One is Republic itself, the other is our Board of Health. Republic, in my opinion, has not been truthful to the town during this situation. They've been ill-prepared and have not met one promise they've made to date. To go 10 months and not have a contract finalized shows the type of business practices they stand for. Their search for maximum profits have put the residents of Rockland in a very difficult position, and I expected more from a company we chose to partner with. They've let us down. Our Board of Health has been mostly silent during this time. They've left it to the health agent, uh, Del Shawn, and to our town administrator, Doug Lapp, to initiate getting information out to the residents. They, as a board, have not taken the responsibility that is theirs as the authorized board for trash removal, and it's quite disheartening. This board unfortunately continues to have its challenges, but hands are tied until changes are made. Thank you, Richard Penny. Uh, and this is more as a resident, but also a member of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Chairman, my...
Congratulations to the Voc Tech for getting a couple hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. Uh, we have a lot of residents that send their children there, and, uh, anything that improves our children's schools is a great thing. To David DeCose, thanks for letting us know about it, and Senator Keenan, whatever you had to do with it, thank you so much. Uh, reading in the newspaper and on the news that drug companies who sell the opiates to everybody want to settle. Uh, was on the news the other night, uh, the town is in on that lawsuit. We should, um, somewhere along, like, get some, some sort of, uh, financial remuneration for our efforts in, in the, while it gets opiates. Uh, what else? Oh, um, every morning I watch Channel 5 News, and every morning I see, uh, the high-fives of the good morning and the school kids, and everybody from every different school around this state says, you know, hello to everybody, welcome to Channel 5, blah, 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 the eye-opener they call it. And, uh, I would like to see our school, uh, the town of Rockland, do something along that lines also, so that, you know, we, we're on, you know, some point where we're in front of the people. You know, Rockland has a reputation of being, um, maybe a less than desirable place to come because of the way the, the media treats everything that happens here, and, and, you know, you know, somebody gets in a, gets arrested, and he lived in Rockland once, you know, he hasn't lived there for 27 years, but they say formally from Rockland, they don't say formally from everywhere else. So, we need to, uh, publicly, uh, get our name out there, you know, and, and show the people that we're as good as any town in, in, in the state, and that we have responsible citizens that care about our people and care about the town, and, and we're not a bunch of, of bums and whatever. The last, uh, town administrator, temporary town administrator, told us that, uh, you know, we have a terrible reputation out there in, in state politics and stuff, and I said, Jesus, I can't imagine why. Uh, and, and one of the reasons is because when they, when the, the newspapers never tell you anything good. They always tell you, you know, like I said, something bad. But, uh, you know, we have a great place to live, we, great place to work, and, and we got all the modern amenities, we've got a new school, we got new roads, we got, um, a lot of good things that make Rockland a stellar place to come and live and, and to raise your children. And it sort of ticks me off that, uh, after so many years, I've been here 50 years now, and we still have a reputation of being a less than a desirable place to live, and that's all male bovine excrement, because we really are a good place to live, and we are a good place to stay, and we have good schools, and, and we have what people want. And so, uh, don't be afraid to come to Rockland, and if anybody tells you that the town of Rockland is, is anything less than a great place to live, send them to see us. Well, at least send them to see me, because I can certainly persuade them with what we have to offer the average person, the average family, and the average working man and woman. So...
Did you wanna give your address?
They can meet me right here, actually. You know? And, uh, what else there goes there? I think that's it. Nothing random and raven, but, you know, somebody, it just, it really upsets me because we've worked really hard to dig ourselves out of that historical mess, if you wanna call it, to dig ourselves out of that historical mess, if you want to call it, you know. It's, it's like being from Hausneck. You know, Hausneck in Quincy had a rough reputation, and still does, yet the place is totally different now than when I grew up. You know, it's all diversified, and the same thing with Rockland. You know, 30 years ago is not now. So, that's enough rabid.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks, Larry. You know, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Larry just said, you know, and I think it's, it's been a priority of every member on this board to represent Rockland in, in the best manner we can, and to tell people, everyone we run into, how great a town Rockland really is. You know, honestly, I don't, I don't care what their opinion is. I know how great a town Rockland is. But, but it is, it is troubling to see how, how we're often portrayed in, in the media. And I think the @RocklandTown Twitter handle will actually help a little bit in, in getting that information into the, into the atmosphere and, you know, letting people know what's going on in Rockland. And I think for too long, we've kind of let the narrative be controlled, and now it's our opportunity to control that narrative. And I think, I think that's exciting. And it shows that, that we're adapting to the times. You know, I don't know what the hesitation was for all those years. I know Mike was, was really big on having some social media, you know, footprint from, from this board, from the town, to not only inform residents, but inform other communities what's going on. And there was always a hesitation to it. You know, people talked about it as if it was a bad thing. And I think we saw with this weekend, the amount of information that Doug was able to put out on that feed, and just the amount of people that are now following that feed. It's been open for, what, five days, and over 100 people. I mean, it's, a lot of people are seeing this information now. So, you know, it's time for us to control...
Do we have other lectures?
Probably, probably. But it's, it's time for us to control the narrative and stop when, you know, people, you know, that don't live here tell people what it's like to be here. So, thanks for saying that, Larry. It got me going.
No, that's okay.
A couple, a couple of events. One, this weekend, the Friends of Rockland Memorial Library, I have an ice cream social and a concert on the front grass on September 7th, Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00. And next week, you know, Larry touched on it a little bit, talking about the opioid crisis. We have a tremendous group in this town called Rockland Cares. Every year, they have a candlelight vigil. It's, it's one of the most powerful nights in the town. It, this year, it's being held on September 12th, Thursday, at 5:45 PM at the Rockland High School Auditorium. You know, I can't say enough of the work that Rockland Cares does. Mike was a founding member of it. And they continue to do great work and raise awareness and try to educate the community. It's really, really a powerful night, and it's an epidemic that just won't seem to go away. I, I lost a classmate just the other day to, to this battle. And, I mean, I'm almost 40. I shouldn't be losing classmates to this, but it's, it's just, it's just an awful, awful disease, and they do a tremendous job. And it really, really something, a group in this town that we should continue to celebrate as often as we can. And then I'll close with just, you know, with the trash, you know, reiterate some of Rich's comments. Doug, I thought you did a phenomenal job. Just text me if you want me to stop calling. I feel like, I feel like I must have called you 30 times, and every time you're like, what? I'm like, all right, all right, I get it. You know, do your thing. But also, Delshaun, you know, I think people give her a little bit of a bad rap sometimes. I, I don't know why. She's always been very professional with me, and I, I think she really rose to the occasion. She called me, I think it was 6:15 on Thursday morning, to let me know what was going on, just to give me a heads-up, and, and what her plans were in place to get ahead of this. And, you know, it's not perfect, and, you know, all I did was put out the, you know, copied the tweets that Doug put out on, on Twitter, and I put them onto Facebook. And at times, yeah, I felt like we were the Ministry of Misinformation, but that wasn't because of us necessarily. That was, you know, our vendor not being able to follow through, you know, an overpromise, underdeliver on the services that they promised. So that's been disappointing, but, and as disappointing as the strike has been, and the way everything has, has come to be, I think Doug and Deli should definitely be commended for the job they've done during this. So, thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Vote, call, vote. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. unanimous. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you.